Good afternoon. The time is one thirty-one PM. The date is Thursday, April third, two thousand and twenty-five. It's another beautiful day here in paradise, and I'm happy to call to order the regularly scheduled zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of West Palm Beach. I'll first ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Emily and Savage, here. Dana Picotte, here. Jonathan Burgess, here. Christopher Hagan, here. Alfred Fields, here. Sherry Hack, here. Let the record reflect that Christopher Cameron is not present.
Okay. We've got six members present, so that will be five voting members and one alternate. That does constitute a quorum, so we may begin the proceedings. We'll first start off by having everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. You may be seated. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes from the March zoning board of appeals meeting, so first I'll ask if any members here had any additions, corrections, or modifications to the minutes. And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. The motion is made by Board Member Fields and seconded by Board Member Picotte. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next, we'll go to a report from our planning division staff. Ms. Jones Van.
Good afternoon. Chair members, staff has no update on the agenda. We will talk about Mr. Kramer on other business.
Okay, thank you. Now that moves to remarks by the chairperson. I'll go through and just explain what the rules and procedures are for the, any of the items that are held on to today's agenda. The matters before the zoning board of appeals are quasi judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will make a presentation and answer any questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will provide a presentation and recommendation to the board, and then answer any questions. Members of the public who are present will then be given an opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance at today's meetings, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. At that point, the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. The floor will then be closed. This board will go into executive session for discussion, a motion, and a vote. And as a reminder on all the items that come before us, four affirmative votes are required for approval. With that, I have no other comments, so we'll now just move to declaration of ex parte communication by each of the board members up here. I'll start off on my left with Board Member Savage.
As to matter case number three, four, four. I have not had any ex parte communications. I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. As to case number three, four, four, two. I have not had any ex parte communications. I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Picotte?
As to case number three, four, four, eight, and case number three, four, four, two. I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Burgess?
Well, this is my first time where, as a neighbor, receiving a mailer from the city and having to disclose that on public notice, but I have received written communications on case three, four, four, eight, and made a site visit, just given my close proximity of my property to the applicant. Other than that, as to matter three, four, four, eight, and three, four, four, two, I have had no other ex parte communications or received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Field?
As to matters of case number three, four, four, eight, and case number three, four, four, two. I have not had ex parte communications. I have not had written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visitation. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And alternate Hack?
As to matter three, four, four, eight, and three, four, four, two. I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And for myself, as to case number three, four, four, eight, and three, four, four, two. I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. So with that, I will move on to opening the public hearing and starting off with swearing in of the speakers. That means that anybody here who is present, who wishes to speak on either of the cases that are before us today, please rise, and our secretary will read an oath to you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start off with item number one, which is zoning board of appeals, case number three, four, four, eight. I'll ask our secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Bradley Berkman, ESQ of Greenspoon Martyr LLP, the applicant, on behalf of Chris Harbin, the owner, for the approval of a Class B special use permit with waivers to allow a specialty food store, The Little Greek Market, to operate the sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption on a property located within the neighborhood commercial NC zoning designation pursuant to section ninety-four dash two seventy-two, table IX dash one, and section ninety-four dash thirty-six E three of the city's zoning and land development regulations. The subject property consisting of approximately zero point seventeen acres is generally located at three, two, thirty-eight South Dixie Highway within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. We'll start off with the applicant providing us a presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. My name is Adrian Noto. I'm with the law firm of Greenspoon Martyr, offices at six hundred Brickell Avenue, Miami, Florida. I'm here today on behalf of The Little Greek Market LLC, which is for a retail market space that's located at thirty-two, thirty-eight South Dixie Highway. With me here today is Chris Harbin, who is the owner of The Little Greek Market LLC. He's excited to bring this use to the community and to serve all of the community. I'll run through the presentation really quick. So today we are here, we are seeking a Class B special use permit. The market is a Greek market that will offer specialty Greek items, food and beverages, which will also include the sale of beer and wine for consumption off the premises, which is what brings us here today for this request. As you can see, the property is highlighted in the red area on the slide. It is in the NC zoning district. And this site is part of a small retail center that actually has four units. The retail, the Greek market will be one of the bays in the retail center. As I said before, they'll operate as a specialty food market serving the neighborhood that will offer specialty Greek items, food, beverages, which will also include the beer and wine for consumption off the premises. Market aims to attract a broad customer base of the entire community interested in Greek culture and the Mediterranean diet. And as you can see here, the arrow points to the space that The Little Greek Market will operate in. And there's just a floor plan of the premises, so you can see that. A picture of what the market will look like. They're currently being built out and open to open in the next few weeks, hopefully. The hours of operation will be from ten AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday, and from ten AM to four PM on Sundays. I'll skip this unless you want me to read through these, so we can go to the conditions. So the professional staff is recommending approval. The applicant is in agreement with the conditions that are being proposed by staff, which is the sales of beer and wine for consumption off the premises, so be incidental to the main use, which is the sales of specialty food and beverages, and limited to the area within the subject building located at the thirty-two, thirty-eight South Dixie Highway, which the applicant's in agreement with. And no expansion of the use is permitted unless an application is submitted and approved to modify the special B class special use permit, which again, the applicant is in agreement with. And I'm here, and Chris is here, to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, thank you. I'll start off on my left with Board Member Picotte, with any questions of the applicant.
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Burgess?
No questions.
And Board Member Fields?
No questions.
Okay, or alternate Hack? And Board Member Savage?
No questions.
Okay. I have no questions of the applicant either.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I will now ask city staff to come forward and make your presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Louisa Zinni, Senior Planner, for the record. The applicant made a very adequate presentation, therefore I'm going to be very brief with mine. And as it stated again, this is for the sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption. The request of the applicant for the subject property. So the recommendation is approval subject to the conditions already stated by the applicant for the record. Staff believes that the application complies with the zoning and land development regulations, section ninety-four, thirty-six, E three, general use standards, zoning land development regulations, section ninety-four, thirty-six, E four, specific use standards, and zoning land development regulations, section ninety-four, two seventy-three, D four, additional standards. Therefore, staff approves subject to the conditions. That concludes my presentation. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Okay. We'll start off with Board Member Burgess. Any questions of staff?
No questions for staff.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
The one condition that speaks to, that the use of the permit cannot be expanded upon, and it's to be incidental to the primary business. How's that being monitored?
Correct. So we have code enforcement to enforce those conditions, and that will be done by code enforcement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Alternate Hack?
No questions.
Board Member Savage?
Questions?
Okay, Board Member Picotte?
No questions.
And my only question was, so this is brought to us because, and I think I've read in the staff report, because we're in the neighborhood commercial zoning district, so any, because of that, any business that we're seeking to do what this business is seeking to do has to come before this board?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And then are there similar uses within, that you're aware of, in the neighborhood commercial district that are previously approved in this area?
According to the staff's research, yes, there are similar uses within the Dixie Highway, along that corridor, and yes, there within the area.
Okay. Yeah, and just anecdotally, I'm aware, across Dixie Highway is the, there's a wine market in the bottom level of Casamara facing Dixie, and I can't remember, I think that's maybe zoned, because that's a mixed use, that's maybe zoned separately, but similar use, so okay.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
And almost immediately across the street is the ABC Wine and Liquor Store.
Yeah, the ABC Liquor Store across the street, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I have no other questions, so now we'll just move to public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. I didn't receive any cards, so I'll ask if anyone here is present who wishes to speak regarding this item, to please come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask staff if there are any voicemails, emails, or anything that need to be entered into the record. No, yeah, no voicemails or anything?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll close the public hearing and provide the applicant with an opportunity for final remarks, if you wish. If you can pass if you don't wish.
No final remarks. We're in agreement with all the conditions that are being recommended by professional staff.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thanks. So now move to board discussion. I'll start off with Board Member Fields. Any discussion on this item?
No further discussion.
Alternate Hack? Okay. We'll go to Board Member Savage?
No further discussion.
Board Member Picotte?
No discussion.
Okay. Board Member Burgess?
Just to note that, you know, consideration as a kind of incidental use, and a condition to that effect, and the testimony presented, you know, it's kind of an accessory kind of approval for, it's not going to really generate any, anything more than de minimis traffic impact, especially since kind of the pickup and easy in and easy out is like right across the street, so I don't know that any of those types of traffic concerns that we would have to discuss before are relevant here, so I just wanted to make that point, as part of kind of my general support for the application.
Understood. Okay, thank you. I have no further discussion on the item, so at this point, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that the zoning board of appeals grant BB case number three, four, four, eight, a request by Bradley Berkman of Greenspoon Martyr LLP, on behalf of Jane Williams, for the approval of a Class B special use permit to allow a specialty food store, The Little Greek Market, to operate the sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption on a property located within the neighborhood commercial zoning designation. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted in staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding a fact that each of the criteria in section ninety-four dash thirty-six, E three, and E four, section ninety-four dash two seventy-two, table nine, one, and section ninety-four dash two seven three, A two, of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the Class B special use permit is made conditional upon the restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards listed in the staff report dated March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, which I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach.
I just wanted to correct the name in there. There was a typo that Jane Williams, it should be Chris Harbin for Little Greek Market LLC, that was it. I just wanted to put that in the record.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the motion maker if you're fine amending the motion to reflect that it's on behalf of Chris Harbin?
Chris Harbin.
Okay. With that modification to the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Burgess and seconded by Board Member Fields. I'll ask our secretary to please call the roll.
Sherry Hack?
Yes, not a voting member at this moment.
Emily and Savage? Yes. Dana Picotte?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes. The motion passes five, zero. Okay, congratulations. Thanks. We'll now move on to the second case on our agenda today, which is zoning board of appeals, case number three, four, four, two. I'll ask our secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Schmidt Nichols, on behalf of Two Fifty Southern LLC, for a Class B special use permit to allow for two off-site parking locations at two fifteen and two thirteen Southern Boulevard, for the restaurant located at Two Fifty Southern Boulevard. The subject property consisting of approximately zero point three two acres is generally located at Two Fifty Southern Boulevard within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. We'll start off by having the applicant provide us with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. Cameron Ennis with Schmidt Nichols, on behalf of the applicant. So as you heard, we're here to request a Class B special use permit for off-site parking and three variances for a restaurant at Two Fifty Southern Boulevard, also known as Mary Lou's. So we've got a full agenda here, so we'll jump right into it. So the site is located southeast corner of Southern Boulevard and Olive. It's point three two acres. It's located in the NC Neighborhood Commercial zoning district, has a future land use of commercial. Here you can see a little bit bigger view of the site. So as you may know, this used to be the Burdo's Convenience Store, which operated there since nineteen seventy. In two thousand and twenty-three, Mary Lou's took over the site, and they put quite a bit of effort into preserving the existing building and also rebuilding the interior to create a very high-end restaurant within the inside. So here's a couple renderings that were done prior to the interior build-out. So you can see very high quality. And here's a couple photos after it was completed, so you can see the level of work here is very, very high quality. Made a very nice interior build-out here. So just want to review the current operations of the restaurant and the existing site. So in the code, restaurants are allowed by right in the NC district, so that is how they're currently operating with a approved occupational license. They're a restaurant with live music and full bar. This is very similar to other restaurants that have taken over existing properties along South Dixie. For example, Table Twenty-six, Lenora's, Grotto, Cafe Sapore, these are some examples. I also want to point out that the previous use of Burdo's, which was a convenience store at fuel sales, had up to eight hundred trips per day, according to the I T manual. This restaurant use will only produce up to three hundred trips per day, so it is actually a reduction of traffic impact. So this is the existing site plan of record that Burdo's had. You can see in red there, there's three existing two-way driveways that are going on to Southern Boulevard and South Olive, very close to the intersection there. I also want to point out, it doesn't really meet current code standards. There's minimal landscape buffer around the outside there. They provide nine parking spaces. One of those, actually several of those are close to the residential properties to the south. And in addition to that, their ADA parking spaces at the southeast corner there, which is actually quite far from the main entrance, so that couldn't meet current code standards. You can also just see here, that's, you know, basically a sea of asphalt out there. So the new owners looking to significantly improve this, both for safety and aesthetic reasons. So that goes into our two main requests here, as part of this Class B request. So the first are three minor variances that will help us bring this site up to current code standards to the best of our ability. And the second part will be for the off-site parking to accommodate an outdoor seating area expansion. So here's the proposed site plan. So we went from those three two-way drive aisles down to a, to two one-way drive aisles, coming in off Southern Boulevard and out onto Olive. This was a request by Sina, who had a significant interest in reducing the amount of conflicts that were happening there at that intersection. So this is a significantly safer design here. We went to FDOT with this design to request approval for the driveway onto Southern. They went ahead and approved that. They liked the design quite a bit. You can also see, you know, I understand it's kind of crazy on there, there's a lot of cars that you can see on there, but what we're trying to show is that with the valet stand at the south end there, and with the one-way drive aisle situation, we're able to accommodate twelve cars stacked onto our site and significantly reduce the possibility of vehicles backing out onto Southern Boulevard. So significantly improved site design that we're going for here. And in order to get that, we, there are unfortunately three variances that we're going to have to request, just due to the constraints of the site. It's a very small site at a corner here. So the first one, we're requesting to reduce the minimum landscape buffer width by up to three feet along the west property line. So you can see in red here, this is where the five-foot buffer is required to go. This in green, you can see where we are able to provide that buffer. And if you see there, there are three little pinch points that are a result of that eighteen-foot minimum drive aisle width for the one-way circulation that we're providing. And as you saw on that previous slide, that drive aisle width actually helps us quite a bit to stack as many cars as we can on the site and reduce any traffic impacts. So we think that's a reasonable ask there. In addition, we do have quite a bit of additional landscape area that we're able to provide over there in that light green color. It's about five times the amount of landscape area that is lost to those three pinch points that I pointed out. Variance two, so this is to ask for the reduction of landscape island widths. So there were nine spaces on this site previously, and we need to replace those nine spaces, get as much parking on the site as we can, given the constraints. So one of the things we had to do is put two, tuck two of those employee spaces at the northeast corner there. Unfortunately, due to the location of the building and how close it is to the property line up there, there's not enough space to provide the minimum eight-foot buffer width there. However, we think the benefit of having additional parking on this site is a good mitigating factor there. It's also behind the five-foot landscape buffer that we're still able to provide, so it's still screened and still has quite a bit of green space over there. The third variance is to reduce the minimum rear setback to some trellis structures that we're providing in the outdoor seating area. So if you see in the red circle there, the code requires a fifteen-foot minimum setback to residential properties from any type of vertical structure. So in this case, we're providing sort of a pergola-type structure over there. It'll be planted with vines and flowers and things like that to make a nice aesthetic in the outdoor seating area and also provide shade. So as a result of that, and where the existing building is, and that large overhang that's over there, it does, it is being located approximately five feet from the neighbor down there. There is still landscape buffer between that trellis and the neighbor, and I just want to point out that we also have a letter of support from that neighbor as well for our request tonight. So those three variances will help us bring this site into as much compliance as we possibly can, and to significantly improve this site. So now we're moving on to the outdoor seating. So the applicant is proposing a just shy of two thousand square feet of outdoor seating area in the rear of the site, and in order to do that, they are going to need some additional parking in accordance with the code. I also wanted to show a rendering of what that outdoor seating area is going to look like. You can see some of that trellis structure that I was talking about. A lot of greenery back there. It's going to be very, very high quality. So as you saw in those previous slides, there's really nowhere else to park cars on this site. So the applicant went over to the neighbors at two fifteen and two thirteen Southern, and they got in agreement with them to do off-site parking on those two properties. And so that's what we're here to request tonight, or today. So per the code, we need one space per one hundred square feet of outdoor seating area with nineteen seventy-six square feet. That results in twenty spaces required. We did a rather conservative design here with twenty-four total spaces that staff has agreed to, that you can see here. However, operationally, with the professional valet service, they could potentially get up to thirty-three spaces in full operation here, so you can see those spaces there. Also, as part of this request, we are going to be going into a tri-party agreement between the city, the owners of the restaurant property, and the two-one-three and two-one-five Southern property owners, and that will be recorded into the public record. So any elimination of those in the future will result in a proportionate reduction of the outdoor seating area. So this is a valet operation plan that was done by our traffic engineer. In the black line there, you can see where the valets will be taking the cars from the restaurant over to the neighboring properties at two-one-five and two-one-three Southern. The red line shows where they will be coming from those properties back into the restaurant. And then the dashed blue line is where the pedestrian walkway will be for those valet employees. So this application meets all those standards. Again, those parking agreements will be signed, assuming we get approval tonight, and they will be recorded into the public record. The attorney has, city of West Palm Beach attorney has already reviewed these and given preliminary approval. Staff has recommended approval, and they've issued four conditions of approval that the applicant is in agreement with. And I also want to point out, we have two letters of support, one from two-three-four Southern, which is directly to the east of the restaurant, and one from two-four-one Malvern, directly to the south. Thank you very much, and we ask for your support. Our team is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start off with alternate Hack. Any questions of the applicant?
I do. I'm a little confused on the required, required parking versus the proposed parking that we'll get with the special permit.
Go back to that. So there's twenty spaces- So there's twenty spaces that are required for the outdoor seating portion. Like I said before, the interior portion of the restaurant is permitted by right. They are operating currently with the nine spaces that are on that site. We're gonna be replacing those nine onsite, so it's, it's a one-for-one replacement for the interior portion. But the exterior, the outdoor seating expansion is what we're here to request uh, off-site parking for. So there's twenty spaces required for that and we're providing twenty-four spaces off-site.
Any other further questions of the applicant?
No, no further questions.
Okay. I'll go to uh, Board Member Savage.
Yes, if you could uh, go to that slide with, I wanted to read the letters that you had on here. Flip by it fast.
Yeah, I don't know if I can zoom in there.
Is it in our packet? I didn't see it. That's what I was, I was looking for, those letters, but, oh.
I know one of them's a little green there.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Uh, Board Member Pecot.
So just to ensure the safety of the staff of the valets, are you going to be training them or how do you foresee that working out so that there's no incidents?
So I believe there, it's a third-party service, um, but they are licensed valets from my understanding. Is that correct? I'm gonna come up.
Hey guys, uh, my name's Evan Spizer. I'm one of the owners of the property. It'll be a professional valet company. They run valet for multiple restaurants and venues in the area. So they're pre-trained, existing business. They have been in operation for a long period of time.
So familiar with the area and the traffic patterns?
Yes, very much so.
Thank you. Additionally, when the studies were done for the ingress and egress, was it done during peak times so they could tell the difference as far as traffic patterns?
Yeah, they, they went out and actually did counts out there during peak times. Um, so yes, yep.
Thank you, no further questions.
Okay. Uh, Board Member Burgess.
So as an extension of my colleague's uh, question on the kind of valet security or safety concerns, I think concern that came up with another application next door to the two thirteen Southern was a valet operation that ran somewhat similarly, where they relied on the parcel to the south of, of their site to get across the street to do the similar thing. And so I'm wondering, first of all, if it's the same valet company, if there's a way to coordinate the crossing of Southern Boulevard more holistically is, is kind of a question, not necessarily for the applicant, but in general I have. And then I think you've shown here through the crosswalk diagram how pedestrians are getting over, but I'm not sure that valets crossing traffic like that as indicated by the red is what is gonna happen, right? So I feel like um, the other, the other application had a kind of comprehensive uh, valet kind of uh, operations report to ensure that they were crossing at the crosswalk, that there were safe provisions uh, for that and that it was part of kind of the routing of that. And I'm wondering, how extensive have you looked into that here? Cause is it beyond this graphic uh, in terms of a more comprehensive report?
Yeah, so there, there was a valet operation report that was done and it did detail exactly how this is gonna work and that they have to wait at the crosswalk. Um, but I understand your concern that, you know, can't control everybody, but um, yeah, that is, that was the plan is to have them cross the crosswalk and it's written in the valet operational plan.
And so valets are gonna be leaving in the car to get across the street and then walking back from the street by themselves to the site. So it's kind of a loop that way, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, vice versa, right.
And you had mentioned that with the kind of professional valet in place, there's more parking capacity on the site. But in the alternative, uh, where it may be like a self-park situation, then we have kind of untrained pedestrians cross the street too.
So, so there's only gonna be valet service. You can only, yeah, only the valets will be parking on these off-site properties.
Is that a condition um, proposed? Or something that you'd be interested in um, accepting? If we put a condition on that required the off-site parking to be for professionally trained valet?
I don't think it's been proposed.
The operation manual?
I think, I think we're in agreement with that, yes.
Cause I think following that, you know, is, is critical, especially given the nature of the roadway itself.
I can understand, yeah, totally.
Um, okay, no other questions for the applicant, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Fields.
I just wanna make sure we're, we're clear that the outdoor seating is, is contingent on the, the agreement staying in place uh, with the off-site parking. Uh, and uh, if that agreement is changed, will the applicant agree that it's their responsibility to notify uh, the city of that change and that the outdoor seating is then to go away?
So yes, that, that is true, that if one of those agreements goes away or gets changed in some way, um, that it will reduce the amount of outdoor seating that can happen there. Um, the city is also part of that agreement. So I believe if one of those gets changed, the city will be notified. They have to, I think, sign on uh, to that change or, or elimination of that agreement. From my understanding.
Sorry, I was gonna say the same thing. That basically just by nature and definition of the tri-party agreement, if that contract were to be broken, the city would be notified. And we're well aware going into it, kind of how Cameron alluded to in the beginning of his presentation, that if we were to lose one of those off-site parking spots, we would then lose the equivalent of the square footage outside until remedied, you know, elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
I also just want to add, so if one of those goes away, we would actually have to come in front of this board in order to make that change and get that change approved. So the city would be notified.
Okay, thank you.
Um, before I get into questions, I just, I also needed to just note um, that I have a, personally have a hard stop at two thirty-five P M. today. Uh, we would still have a quorum if I need to leave during this uh, this item. I'll just hand the gavel over to uh, to someone if that's the case. Um, but did want to, to mention that. Um, I've got, uh, I do have a few questions. Um, I didn't see the uh, F D O T. I know it was alluded to, but the F D O T, uh, I assume it was a pre-application letter. Um, I don't think that was attached in, in our uh, packet, but I, I did want to uh, confirm whether or not, when the meeting was held with D O T, if D O T understood that um, that if they were provided with a copy of the valet plan or just the driveway plan. Because the, the concern is that um, you know, patrons, if they're coming, for example, if they're coming from Palm Beach, coming from the east, they're gonna be making the left turn into the site. But uh, and that would be assumed if, if it were a self-parking situation. But valet tends to double the amount of traffic entering and exiting the driveways when you have off-site parking. Because now, because all the parking is across the street into the east, all the valet vehicles returning will be making that left turn. So it's a, it's a lot more left turns than if, if there were no off-site valet. And so I just want to make sure that D O T was uh, aware of the valet when they approved the...
They, they were aware, yeah. That was, that was a major part of our request, um, in our, our review in that pre-app.
Okay. So, yeah, and, and to a certain extent, this does clean up uh, the situation. Um, you know, from the, the current driveway situation uh, on the, you know, that's, exists on the site today, um, which has more driveways and more conflict points. Uh, so I understand that. Um, the uh, the businesses at two thirteen and two fifteen, what type of, what type of businesses are those?
It's mainly uh, retail and they close at about five P M. Uh, so it doesn't conflict with our, our operation.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's the concern is if, if they were to, at some point in the future, extend their hours and be open till eight P M. or nine P M., obviously that's um, that's problematic. Um, and I, I think maybe that's partially covered in the, the fact that uh, if there are changes, I, I don't know if the, if, if that particular instance is covered in the agreement, if they, if they don't change the use, but change the hours of operation.
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it says the exact hours, but uh, we can make that part of it, absolutely.
Okay. Um, and then one other question was about Mary Lou's itself. Is it open for lunch and dinner or just dinner?
Just dinner.
Okay. So five P M.?
Five P M. and later, correct.
Okay. And, and that would be in the reverse, the same concern that if, if the restaurant and the outdoor seating were to open for lunch, then that would be problematic from a...
Yeah, I think we'll, I'll double check that there's something in there that says that there can't be overlapping hours.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll check that.
Okay. And we did have in our backup, um, it was labeled uh, the Parking Operations Statement uh, from Simmons and White. Was that what you were referring to as the valet uh, analysis? Or was there a, another analysis on top of that that was...
No, I believe that was the, the one I was referring to, yeah.
Okay, okay. So we did see that in our packet and that included the exhibit that you showed.
Right.
Um, has the off-site valet company been hired yet or... Okay.
I think so, yes, yep.
And, and so, and I think you alluded to that uh, it's, it's a company that does operate some other valets in the, in the vicinity. Okay. Yeah, and I, I think that's, obviously they have, um, they train their staff and they have, they carry liability insurance. I think there, there certainly are some, some concerns here um, with crossing Southern Boulevard. Uh, but we, you know, it's not unprecedented because uh, they, it was alluded to, Cafe Sapore was, was mentioned. Actually, I guess that was in the prior uh, application that, that, that one was mentioned or, or was it in this one? But the uh, I, I believe that's the one that operates the valet parking on the south side of Southern and the, the restaurants on the north. Uh, so it's, it's flipped, but they, they cross Southern as well.
Right.
Okay.
And if memory serves, Simmons and White was the traffic engineer on that. So to the extent that it could be coordinated, it was from the same company.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, and I see the F D O T pre-app letter on our screen. So again, I don't think that was, if it was in our packet, I missed it, but, but that's helpful.
I also want to clarify, so the, the, when we go back and check those agreements, that um, those agreements, those parking agreements are just for the outdoor seating. So any clauses in there about overlapping hours, it's, it's gonna specifically reference outdoor seating. The outdoor seating area only.
So in theory, the restaurant could open in the future for lunch, but only for interior service and no outdoor lunch dining.
That's correct, yep.
Would be provided, okay. Um, the, the prior use, which was the convenience store, I, you know, and it only had nine parking spaces. I'm assuming that was probably not meeting the current parking code either?
I don't think so, no. I think with the, the square footage of the building, it was just under, I believe so.
Okay, but we don't have a comparison of how much out-of-compliance it was before and how much out-of-compliance it is now, or...
Um, I don't have that exact number in front of me now.
Okay.
But I, I believe it was relatively minor. It wasn't too far off uh, from what it is currently.
Okay. Um, yeah, that, I mean, in some ways that may be useful to know, um, just because you, you know, I think if the, I, I think a concern would be that the um, if, if the restaurant were to open for lunch, um, and use the, even if it's grandfathered in legally, uh, it likely would requ, still in practicality, require more than nine spaces. Um, and I, I'll reserve a question for staff, I guess, about that. About if that were to come to pass, so um, I guess uh, with no other questions of the applicant, we'll ask staff to come up and make a presentation.
Thank you.
Alexa Sanglier, planner for the record. So first off, I just want to clarify a couple of things. So the applicant is not required variance one or variance two on the landscape code, just because census is an existing site. Um, similar how we look at parking requirements, if this is illegal, non-conforming parking lot, it's looked at the best of your ability. Tiffany did make those comments earlier on the application, but there were discussions like, the best of your ability, do the best you can. This is an existing site. So that's why staff is not holding them to variance one or two regarding the variances, just to clarify that. And then also to clarify, we are only here for the Class B, the accessory parking lots. We're not voting on the canopy square footage at this time. We're counting that for the parking. And I can clarify if you want me to reword that, but we're just here for the excess of the two lots.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Um, can you, I'm...
Are you good?
My, I'm a little confused. Restate that again, we're only here...
We're only here for the Class B, so the accessory parking lots.
Accessory parking lots, as it relates to...
The, we're later on, we'll, you'll most likely see the addition of the canopies, but we're just voting on the parking for that. Can you reword that?
I'll, I'll follow up after your presentation and maybe during the presentation, it'll, it'll clear up for me. Let's, let me hear from the...
Um, so as I stated earlier, census is an existing lot. The existing lot does not meet the code. They actually are eighteen parking spaces short from existing per prior code. But since it's existing use, they are considered grandfathered in a sense, non-conforming. And they're only um, required to comply to the addition of the canopy. So total would be thirty-three spaces. So they actually, instead of being eighteen short, which they prior are now, they're only being nine short. So they are, they still be slightly under, but they are only responsible for the addition itself. And then, these are my recommendations. And I just wanted to clarify on one of Cameron's diagrams I saw. So the valet is not one of our conditions. The valet cannot make that turn onto Malvern. They do have to go up Southern. That was one of the earlier comments, like Veronica with Traffic did not want valet going down Malvern. We want to maintain that residential street as best as we could and have the valet not make that left-hand turn. But these are my conditions. Um, we are recommending approval of conditions, but do you have any questions? And I can clarify, I know I was a little confused, confusing.
Okay, um, yeah, if that's the uh, if that's the end of staff's presentation, we'll, I'll go down the, the row for, for questions. So I'll start off with uh, Board Member Savage with questions of staff.
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Pecot.
Um, I believe Board Member Burgess had mentioned about putting in something about the valets and there being a condition in there. Would you be okay with that?
Yes, staff is okay with that condition. Thank you.
No other questions?
No other questions.
Uh, Board Member Burgess.
No questions for staff, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Fields.
So, so, so I'm totally clear now. The, the outdoor seating is, is, is is not before us.
The parking is, but not the structure itself, so not that variance that got mentioned.
So the variance for that will be coming back before us at a later date.
Correct.
Okay, and uh, sorry, go to alternate hack.
No questions.
Okay. Um, just going uh, back to, I, I want to go back to the math then that you had there. Um, so thirty-three spaces uh, total would be required. And um, but that, that's...
Well, technically, if we're, if we're gonna go by code, technically forty-two would be required total. But they're adding...
That's what I was going to, okay, yeah. And that made sense because it was the twenty-four plus eight, eighteen um, is the forty-two. Uh, because they're, they need the adequate parking. So is it forty-two total or there's, or their deficiency is forty-two?
Um, forty-two per like code if they didn't have this existing. But remember, since they would only have to comply to the outdoor seating, so they technically will still be short, but it will be more conforming than currently.
Got it, okay. And so code, code without any credit would be forty, if, if this were brand-new, uh, they would be required to provide forty-two spaces. They have nine onsite, so they have to provide thirty-three off-site if we were matching code. But they don't, they don't have to get all thirty-three because they had some credits.
Correct, because um, it is illegal, non-conforming. They are not, and they're not touching. They only have to do the, what they're increasing.
Hmm.
So the square footage that they're increasing those spots, which would be fifteen spots.
Okay. I, and then the diagrams that were shown in the applicant's presentation showed, I believe that there were up to thirty-three that could be provided on those. It, it looked pretty tight. Um, so this is twenty-four. And then there was, you know, the...
The other was on...
I think they, they'd have some challenges with um, unparking, you know, and it, I can see how a valet can um, can get to the spaces the way they had it there um, with that configuration cause there were still some, some maneuverability. There, there were still some areas for maneuverability provided. And then I think... And then I think we saw another one where the site was kind of maxed out, but you'd have to do a lot of shuffling, which I'm, I will always forever be impressed with valet operators as I've watched them, how they can shuffle cars, because they can. But, sorry, can you go back to the slide you just had up before this one? Yeah. Okay, so 11 plus 33, that's 24, and then again, they're required to provide 15?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, in reality, there's a possibility that in, you know, sometimes people don't utilize the valet, and so they, sometimes people do self-park. I assume, like, if that were to occur, that may occur on Malvern. That's the closest area where people would be able to
I missed, they could speak on this, but I'm assuming their whole restaurant is valet-operated?
Uh-huh. Yeah. Well, understood, and, you know, sometimes people still say, "Well, I don't want to use the valet," or, you know, they, or, you know, they just, you know, especially if they see, you know, eight cars lined up at the valet stand, they may not want to get into that. And did, part of my follow-up question to that was just in terms of notification for today's hearing, did notices go out to residents on Malvern, right?
Correct. And then I did receive, I did talk to 214 Malvern gal, Ellen Brandon, a lot just for, he wanted a lot of information about it, we had a lot of phone calls, but most of his concerns weren't about parking. He actually gave the applicant kudos for not using Malvern, so it's keeping that residential street, but just the noise, but we are voting on the parking.
Okay, sure.
And the use, as Cameron said earlier, a restaurant is permitted in neighborhood commercial zone.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And I could see, yeah, they could have concern about the outdoor seating, and that's not before us, so understood, okay. Okay, no other questions at this point. At this point, then we will go to, we'll go to public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I did not receive any cards, so if anyone here in the audience is here to speak on this item, please come forward. Okay, and then I'll ask staff, sorry, I know you just sat down. Were there any emails, voicemails, or any other communications that need to be read into the record?
Other than the one that I mentioned earlier, no, we did not receive any emails or phone calls.
Okay, great. Okay. So at this point, I will close the public hearing. I'll go back to the applicant's representative and ask if you had any final words or rebuttal to any of the discussion to provide?
Yes, thank you. One of the things I want to clarify is the proposed condition for valet-only parking over there. We also want to add that employees are allowed to park over there as well, so that was one thing. And then also, from my understanding, it is valet-only. I know you can't control, you know, what other people do, but as an operational standard for them, it is valet-only. So I think that's it.
Okay. Then as a follow-up on your item related to employees, is that there are nine spaces on-site, is the intent that, and there were the two tandem spaces that were designated for employees, which you'd have to do, I think, to get
Yep.
employees in and out, but would the remaining employees utilize any of the nine on-site parking spaces? Or would they all be required to park off-site?
I think it'd be preferred to have them off-site, you know, getting as many vehicles in those spaces on-site for customers, I think is ideal, that could help reduce that line that you're talking about out front. So I think the intent is to have at least two in those two spaces, and then the rest have the option to go to those other lots. It's all going to kind of depend on demand at a particular time as well, so.
Okay. So in addition to valets crossing the street, then we are adding then employees will have to cross Southern?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant before we move to board discussion? Nope. Okay, thank you. We'll go to board discussion now at this point. So go to board member Picotte?
I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay, board member Burgess?
Only just to say, and I don't mean to offend anyone when I call a 1970s building historic, but I think a lot of this is, you know, recognizing the existing nonconformities of a building that's special to the community and trying to do whatever it can to keep that existing building footprint intact for a little while longer, so I appreciate the applicant doing that and presenting us these challenges to overcome, to preserve, you know, older buildings in our community, so thank you.
Okay, board member Fields?
I just want to just be clear that my deliberations is, for the record, strictly on the off-site parking, because I have further questions as it goes with the canopy outdoor seating and parking as it works in tandem. So based on the information that's being provided, my deliberations are solely on the parking. Thank you.
Alternate hack?
No further questions.
Okay, and board member Savage?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it's a really clever revitalization and use with getting the parking across the street for the valet to make it a better use case for the parking as a whole.
Okay, thank you. As far as comments go, I have to say, I'm not without some reservations on, you know, what's been done here. I do echo what board member Burgess said, which is, I think that the corner store site, as I always knew it was, is, you know, sort of a unique property in this city, and so it is, you know, I think it does help maintain the character of the city to preserve it and, you know, just, so you are dealing with a ton of constraints, and, you know, it certainly is cleaning up a driveway situation that is, that is very messy today. It doesn't, you know, doesn't make it perfect, but it makes it better. You know, I think we do have some conditions in here that I think help alleviate some of those concerns, but again, you know, I can't say I'm not without a couple reservations about, you know, how this will still function and operate. With that, I don't think there's any other board discussion, so we'll entertain a motion.
I move that the zoning board of appeals grant application number 3442, a request by Schmidt-Nickels on behalf of 250 Southern LLC for a Class B special use permit for the off-site parking. The proposal, the proposed off-site parking will be located on two separate properties, 215 and 213 Southern Boulevard for Mary Lou's Restaurant. The motion is based upon the testimony presented, along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes the findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article 2, Section 94, 36, E3, 4, and also the standards in Article 9, Section 94-273D54 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Yeah, let's go through conditions, and I think, would we get to read them specifically? I think they're found on page, got it up, I can't see the page number. In the packet.
Okay.
It's the second page of this section of the staff report, but
Okay. Yeah, so in addition, the granting of this Class B special use permit is made conditional upon the restrictions, stipulations, or safeguards listed in the staff report dated March 21st, 2025, which I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Was there an added condition, Mr. Chair?
Let's specify by first reading those conditions, it's on the second page of this part of the staff report.
Can you give me a page number?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it, an overall page number. In our packet.
Okay. Okay.
It's at the top of the page under Roman numeral two.
So this recommendation is made subject to the following conditions. Both lease agreements from property owners of 215 and 213 Southern Boulevard need to be provided. These agreements allow for the off-site parking to legally take place on their properties, and both lease agreements must be provided before the valet system can operate. Updated leases must be provided in order to maintain the Class B approval. 250 Southern Boulevard restaurant valet operations shall not use the residential streets. 250 Southern Boulevard restaurant valet operations shall not impede the westbound left-turn movement-traffic operations or operate in a manner that negatively impacts safety at the signalized intersection of Southern Boulevard at South Olive Drive. 250 Southern Boulevard restaurant valet operations shall not impede free traffic flow on Southern Boulevard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And for discussion, there were four conditions read into the record. I think we talked about possible modifications, so now that it's been seconded, if there's any discussion on the motion or the conditions, we can entertain that?
Yes, I'd like to offer a suggestion to limit the parking on 215 and 213 Southern Boulevard for valet operations only.
I would be open to it being valet and as well as the employee parking, as mentioned by the applicant. So I would be open to, I would amend my motion to stipulate that the 215 and 213 would be for valet as well as employees parking.
I would second it.
Any other discussion on the motion or the conditions? Okay with that, we do have a motion that's been seconded. I'll ask our board secretary, please call the roll.
I'm Lane Savage, yes. Dana Picotte?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes. Okay, motion passed as 5-0. Okay, congratulations. Okay, moving back to the agenda, the next order of business for us today is no unfinished business, no new business, so other business?
Other business, yes, as you may not know, Christopher Kramer resigned today from the board, so Savage is now a full member. And we will have, the next meeting, for May's meeting, we will have to elect a vice chair, so we can do that in May, so everybody give thought to that, so we need a vice chair. We have that election in May.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, and we'll plan for that, okay? Mr. Green?
Mr. Chair, if I may, Rick Green, Development Services Director. Just like to extend that invitation and provide a little background. For the first time in 18 years, we are updating our downtown master plan. We went through a bid process several months ago and selected the firm as the Scovitch Architects out of Miami. Coincidentally, that is the same firm that updated our plan back in 2007. So we're beginning a series of outreach discussions with the public. This is going to be a year-long process. We have a steering committee that Mr. Burgess sits on as a landscape architect, but if you want to put on your calendars, right across the hall in the Flagler Gallery on April 30th, at I think it's 5, 5:00 or 5:30, but plan for 5:00, we're going to have a discussion on mobility and transportation. We're going to bring in some experts, and they're just going to talk, and then we're going to have a question and answer session at the end. And then on May 22nd, we're going to talk about public realm enhancements, just generally in the downtown. Our consultant will meet individually with different groups, we're going to meet with developers and neighborhoods and the like, and our hope is that sometime in the fall, they'll have a draft plan that we'll bring forward through our review process. And ultimately, by the end of the year, we hope to have whatever tweaks the downtown master plan will have, but I wanted you to be aware of the two dates, if you wanted to come and listen and participate.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved by board member Fields, seconded by board member Picotte. All in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. At 2:35 PM, the zoning board of appeals meeting has been adjourned.